Bootcamp and Resource Collective for this Wednesday, January 13th special session on PPP. I'm Robert Theobald, the Small Business Ombudsman and Vice President of Small Business Services for the Arizona Commerce Authority. We'd like to start out the bootcamps by first thanking all of our community partners. We could not do these bootcamp sessions without all of them and their expertise, their time and effort. It's very much appreciated and it's been great to work with them and we look forward to continuing to work with them on the bootcamp sessions. So for those that are new, the Small Business Bootcamp and Resource Collective is designed to help small businesses work through the COVID crisis and return stronger than ever. It is supported by our community partners and it is something we started back in April of 2020 and are continuing on into 2021 and it's, they've been great sessions. All of the previous sessions can be found on our website. If you go to Small Business Bootcamp websites, you can find the links to register for the current week sessions and then following week sessions. Additionally, you can find the archive that lists and contains the recording and the materials for all the previous sessions. We've done over 115 sessions and those can be found in that archive on this website. Additionally, on the website, you can find our Resource Collective. And the Resource Collective is a compilation of tools and resources provided by our community partners to help support small businesses. This is just a sample of those resources and tools and guides that we have available. You'll see on there unemployment insurance guide, guidance for retail, guidance for barber shops and cosmetologists, restaurants, construction, manufacturing, et cetera. So there's a lot of great resources on the Resource Collective. So I want to share a few quick updates with everyone. I've got a link here for the PPP lender list. You're all on here today to hear about the PPP and we want to make sure everybody has a current lender list. Additionally, we have some information on the shuttered venue operator grant program. We're still looking for additional guidance from the SBA on this program, but we have on our website the information that is currently available. Additionally, we have the same information on the employee retention tax credit. This is a great program where businesses can take advantage of it and save a lot of money on their taxes. And then statewide, the safest outside of restaurant assistance program is still open for applications. If you're a restaurant looking to expand your premises, this is a program for you. So please check it out. Additionally, and doing some searching of cities and other counties, we've made some updates to our Arizona Business Resources page under the financial resources there. You may check and see if your county or city has updated their grant programs or support programs. We've updated a number, a bunch of information on there to reflect those current situations, but there are a number of grants available on the local level. Additionally, on our COVID-19 business resources page, you can find additional business guidance and other tools and resources. So quick mention of our programs that can help support small businesses. We have our Small Business Services and we can help support navigating through the SBA and working with the Small Business Development Centers and SCORE. Both of those are no cost programs for small businesses. We can help work through local banking contacts, share the latest developments with the stimulus and other small business related items. Additionally, our Workforce Division can help support small businesses that are looking to hire or train their employees with some of the programs that they have. Then our Manufacturing Extension Partnership is a recognized program to help support manufacturers throughout the state. For those that are looking to start a side gig or just start their own business, full-time business, we have our Small Business Checklist, which is an online interactive guide to help entrepreneurs identify the licensing, registration, compliance items at the local, state and federal levels to help get the business started. We also like to mention the COV-19 Information and Resource Website, arizonatogather.org. There's a lot of great information you can find on that website. So we've got a number of great sessions over the next couple of weeks. We are looking forward to Thursday, we have a session on LinkedIn, on leveraging LinkedIn to scale your business. Next week, we have a session on bringing your brand to life. Additionally, on Thursday, we have building your better business for 2021, scaling backup with Chris Ronzi of Trainual. It's going to be a great session there. And then again, next Wednesday, we'll have another special session with additional updates, if there are any additional updates for the Paycheck Protection Program. And we're also going to look in a little more detail on some of the other programs that were implemented in the stimulus bill or expanded things such as the employee tax, employee retention tax credit, EIDL and some of the other programs. So next week will be another great session, special session for everybody. So with that, we're going to turn the time over to today's speakers. We have Amber Cordova of Prestamo CDFI and Tom Fulcher, the Idea Gardener. Both Tom and Amber have been on before and they're great experts on PPP and the other programs. And so we're going to go ahead and let them get started with the presentation.
Morning, everybody. Going to go ahead and share here. Welcome. Thank you for joining us today. I'm super excited to be presenting with Tom. Tom and I have been providing PPP guidance since the very beginning of the first round. So it's been a fun ride. We do recommend that you wait until the end before you ask questions because this is a pretty comprehensive presentation that we have for you today. We'll try to do a lot of explaining as we go through the process and that'll allow us to really focus on the questions that are remaining after the presentation at the end because we typically get a lot of questions.
And then also just a note, please use the Q and A box at the bottom of your screen, not the chat, but the Q and A. So we can track the questions better through that.
Yeah, it makes it a lot easier. Just a quick disclaimer that we're providing information that's based on information that we've received from the SBA or the Republican Small Business Committee and the current text of the relief bill. This isn't made to be advice for you and you should not take it as legal or financial advice. So today we'll talk about the existing PPP one rule. So that's anybody who has not received a PPP in the past and that is looking to get their first round PPP. We'll talk about the updates under the new legislation and the eligibility for those second draw PPPs for those who received one during the first round. Obviously, we'll recap all of that and then we'll do, talk about other stimulus provisions like the idle and then we'll do the Q and A session. So to dive right in, the eligibility for either program is going to be for for-profit and 501(c)(3) and 501(c)(6) businesses or organizations. The 501(c)(6) is a new addition for round PPP. So for those that are typically like membership or league organizations would now be eligible to apply. Eligibility is also based on having W2 employees or employment income. W2 employees have to have their full residence in the United States and it's up to the first $1,000 in income for their eligibility. For first draw, you must have 500 fewer employees. And then for the second draw loans, it's 300 or less. You're able to use funds. 60% of them need to go towards W2 wages, owner compensation replacement, health, payroll fees, and we'll talk a little bit more about other eligible uses of funds in the next slide. And then the PPP terms are two and a half times the average monthly payroll, again, up to the first $100,000 in wages per employee. And this is for the first, first round. And then the covered period is between eight and 24 weeks. So you'll have eight to 24 weeks to use those funds as part of the program. The intent of this program is to provide a forgivable loan to small businesses that have been financially impacted by COVID and that can continue to pay employees to keep them on payroll. And when we talk about employees, we're talking about W2 employees where you withhold payroll taxes from their paychecks. You file payroll reports quarterly and at the end of the year. We're not talking about 1099 contractors or subcontractors that you just pay to do the work and you don't withhold taxes and you provide a 1099 at the end of the year. Those are called subcontractors or 1099 contractors and they're eligible to apply for their own PPP loan. So that whatever you paid to them won't count towards your eligibility, just to make sure that that's clear. There is a necessity test. So basically what it says is that without this loan, it would impact your ongoing operations. So just be cognizant that there is a necessity requirement and that if you don't need these funds, you should not take them. If you are self-employed and you do not have W2 employees, depending on which tax form you have, you are eligible to receive a PPP. If you receive a 1099 or you're a sole proprietor, self-employed, single member LLC and you file a Schedule C on your tax returns, you are eligible to receive a PPP for owner compensation replacement. If on your 2019 or your 2020 Schedule C, you have positive net income on line 31. So you're going to want to go to your tax form Schedule C that you file with IRS as part of your 1040. You want to look at Schedule C, line 31, and if you have positive net income for 2019 or for 2020, and I know a lot of people haven't done their taxes yet, but either way, you are eligible for a PPP. If you don't have positive net income, if it's negative, you're not eligible if you don't have W2 employees. And Tom, if you want to add anything, feel free to jump on in at any time. When I mentioned the necessity requirement, if your business has been profitable and break even and you expect to survive without this assistance, you might want to talk to your attorney or CPA or an accountant about the ramifications of taking the PPP anyway. The SBA is not going to question any loans under $2 million for the necessity requirement, but just remember that anybody who takes a PPP loan, it's public knowledge. Anybody can go on and find out that you took a PPP and they could report you to someone like the IRS or other type of authorities because it's all based on the necessity. So it really makes sure that this is a necessity before you apply. So I know a lot of people have these burning questions. Can I get a second PPP loan? Yes, if you got a first round PPP loan, you're eligible if you meet certain conditions and we'll talk about those as in another slide. You do not have to have already applied or received forgiveness on your first loan before you apply for a second PPP. The only requirement is that you either have already used all the funds from your first PPP or that you will by the time you get your second PPP. So that's the requirement there. If you didn't get a PPP the first time around, you are eligible to apply for a PPP loan for your first draw under the first draw rules. Applications are available now. You have a couple of different options. You can go to your original lender that provided your PPP loan to you, but you want to make sure that they're still doing PPPs. There's a lot of lenders that aren't doing the second round of PPPs. My organization, we are a community lender, a CDFI, and we're taking applications now as well. I've put our website and you can apply there and we'll walk you through the process as well. Also in the chat, I know that Robert put the list of Arizona lenders. You can also take a look at that lender list to pick a lender that's going to work for you. So updates under the new legislation, they've expanded the eligibility for the use of the PPP loans. So remember that your PPP eligibility is going to be based on your W2 wages that you've paid, on health, dental insurance and unemployment taxes that you've paid. But the use is, you can use them for operational expenses like software, cloud computing, human resources and accounting needs. All these new types of expenses that you've had to take on in 2020 as a result of the pandemic. Same thing with worker protections. So if you've had to buy PPE or get adaptive instruments, or you've had to make some changes to your physical location to allow for health and regulatory guidelines for social distancing, you'll be able to pay for those expenses with the proceeds of your PPP. Also, there's a new provision that if you had property damage as a result of public disturbances of 2020 that you didn't get covered by insurance or any other matter, you can pay for those through the PPP as well. These additional expenses cannot exceed 40%, 60% still has to be used for payroll in order to be eligible for full forgiveness. Some additional unexpected supports that we saw come out of this new legislation were that they removed the requirement to repay the idle advance. So if you received an idle advance from the SBA, prior to this legislation, you would have had to pay that back, but under the new, it would have reduced your forgiveness eligibility. But under this, they've removed that. So it's now full forgiveness. Originally, the PPP loan was not taxable, but you weren't able to use the expenses that you used the PPP for on your tax return as a deduction. They've removed that and you can now use those expenses as a reduction on your taxes and you don't have to claim the PPP as income. They've also made a change and this is for second draw only. So if you got your first draw and you're going for your second draw and you are in accommodation or a food service with a NAICS code that starts with 72, you can get three and a half times your average payroll. So we're talking about restaurants, hotels, small boutique type hotels, RV parks, and the food service is really expansive. One way, if you're not familiar with what your NAICS code or NAICS code is, you can look at your tax return and there should be a spot up at the top on your tax return where you can see how you've been filing in the past. And then they've expanded the group health to include life, disability, vision and dental insurances as part of your eligible costs. So those eligible costs, you can use them as part of your calculation to determine how much you're eligible for. And you can also use your PPP proceeds to keep continuing those benefits. So the additional requirements for a second draw long loan, the business start date, and this is actually for a first draw or a second draw, your business had to have been in operation on February 15th, 2020. If you opened up your business on February 16th, 2020, you are not eligible for the PPP. For second draw loans, you can have no more than 300 employees and that should be the FTE equivalency, I believe. Tom, do you, do you know if it's 300 employees or it's the FTE?
You know, I'm not sure that they've issued that guidance set on that, but it will likely be FTE, but we don't know.
Everything else has been based on FTE. So I think that that's probably safe to assume, but we also guess don't assume anything. For second draw borrowers, you will be required to show that you had a reduction in sales or gross revenues of at least 25% in one quarter of 2020 as compared to 2019. And when we're talking about quarters, we're talking about calendar quarters. You can't pick and choose three months of the year to build a quarter. It's either January, February, March, April, May, June, July, August, September, or October, November, December. And what you'll do is you'll look at the quarter and compare it to the same quarter for 2019. If you had a decrease of at least 25%, then you are eligible for a second draw PPP loan. If it was less than 25%, you're not eligible for a second draw. There's also, there's two ways. You can also do a year over year. So you can do your 2019 annual revenues and your 2020 annual revenues. And preferably that would be through providing your tax returns to demonstrate that. When we're done, I'll put in the chat, I have a link to a spreadsheet that I created that makes it really easy. I have a screenshot that I'll show you guys here in a minute where you can just put in, if you don't have financial statements or you don't have your information ready for 2020 yet, you can also use your bank statements or you can just use a profit and loss by month and just add in by month what you took in in sales or your gross receipts. And it makes it a little bit easier for people that don't have regular accounting. And then, yeah.
There are also opportunities, if you were in business and had revenues in the first quarter of 2020, but did not have any in 2019, there are some opportunities to use second and third quarter of 2020 compared to the first quarter of 2020 to see if you still meet that rule. And there are of course opportunities for seasonal businesses that have a different way to purchase.
Yeah, absolutely. That's a really, really good point. If you started your operations in January of 2020, you can use that first quarter as your baseline. And then if quarter two, three or four of 2020 was at least a 25% deduction from quarter one, then you would be eligible. And then we won't get into seasonality because there's a lot of very unique factors, but you can feel free to reach out to Tom or myself and we can help walk you through those seasonal questions. And then in terms of the safe harbor rules, the safe harbor rules have been extended. So if your business wasn't able, unable to operate at full capacity and you saw the reduction in business and you attest to that, then you're not required to maintain the FTE headcount for forgiveness. If your business wasn't impacted, then you have to keep the same number of employees at at least 75% of their original wage in order to qualify for full forgiveness. The loan terms for the PPP, it's up to a two and a half time average of your monthly payroll costs. And you are eligible to use either 2019 or 2020 numbers at this point. Because we're in January and most people will be applying in January, you can also use the preceding calendar year, but the preceding calendar year right now is, is 20, or the preceding 12 months, the preceding 12 months is the same thing as the calendar year of 2020. Seasonal businesses can calculate based on any 12-week period between February 15th and February of 2019 and February 15th of 2020. So you'll be able to determine your eligibility based on any 12-week period between those two dates. New recipients are going to be churches, 501(c)(6)'s that weren't eligible the first time. 501(c)(6) is a nonprofit, a lot of times a membership organization or leagues. And then the use of funds requirement, 60% needs to be used for payroll costs and we're talking about wages. Wages are going to include tips, sick time, bonuses, paid leave. Payroll costs will also be considered any health or retirement benefits as well. And then also your unemployment tax that you pay to the state only. A use of funds, you are not eligible to use it for the employer portion of Social Security and Medicare or federal unemployment taxes. The other 40% need to be used for the other eligible costs and that was the rent, utilities, mortgage interest, interest on other loan obligations that are fixed debt. And then the increase or the addition of PPE, or if you need to make changes to your facility, if you had property damage that wasn't covered by insurance and what was the other one? They added the, the group benefits, but any other eligible expense, you're able to, oh, the cloud computing, accounting, anything that you had to do to take your business virtual, those are all what you can use under the 40%.
Amber, there were also an allowance for covered supplier costs.
Yes.
And that again, probably one of those areas we need a little more definition on what exactly an essential coverage supplier cost is because even talk about perishable items there.
Yeah, absolutely. That one is a, it opens up all these little wormholes for everybody to try to figure out what, what counts. One thing I do want to point out about this is you are eligible to use 100% of your PPP for W2 wages for paying your employees. You don't have to split it 60/40. In fact, everybody would prefer if you used all the proceeds of your PPP to pay your employees, to keep them on payroll, to continue their benefits. That is the intent of this program. So you, you don't have to use it for anything other than payroll, but you do have to use it for at least 60% payroll in order to be receiving full forgiveness. So when you're determining your eligible amount, if you see this little cloud up here, this is really important. You can use documentation from either 2019 or 2020, but you can only use it for one year. You can't use your Schedule C from 2019 and W2 wages from 2020. Everything has to be from either 2019 or 2020. So we've already seen a lot of people trying to pick and choose. It doesn't work that way. It's one year or the other. So when you are looking at your unique situation, what you're going to look at is two main factors. One, do you have employees or not? And two, what kind of tax form do you file? For, for those of you that are self-employed, that file a Schedule C on your personal taxes and you do not have employees, your eligibility is solely based on line 31 of your Schedule C. So you can pull up your Schedule C from 2019, take a look at line 31. If you have positive net income, divide it by 12 and multiply it by two and a half and that's what you're eligible for. If your 2019 Schedule C is negative net profit, you're not eligible. A lot of people have not filed their 2020 taxes yet. You probably don't even have all your tax documents. But the SBA is allowing Schedule C filers only to create a draft form of their 2020 Schedule C. So if you do your regular bookkeeping and you know what your income and expenses were for 2020, then you can do a draft form of the Schedule C, but just remember that you need to file those same numbers when you officially file your tax return later, because that's going to be a requirement of your forgiveness is that that's what you filed with the IRS. So we have seen some people that fill out a draft and then they change it later on and they have less net income because they don't want to pay taxes on it and it impacts your forgiveness eligibility because you weren't eligible for that amount in the first place. So maybe work with an accountant, a bookkeeper, talk to your CPA before you create your own, own draft, just to make sure that it's going to be accurate. If you have a Schedule C and you have W2 employees, you're eligible for that owner compensation replacement from Schedule C, line 31, in addition to any wages that you paid out to W2 employees. And again, I just want to make sure that everybody understands that these are W2 employees that you pay taxes on and that you withhold taxes from their paychecks and you file a W2 at the end of the year. 1099 contractors that you don't withhold taxes on are not considered employees. They need to file their own PPP. So the type of payroll documentation that we're going to be looking for is we have the annual 940 FEUDAs, that's the federal unemployment, that shows the total wages that you paid through the year. There's also the IRS quarterly 941 reports. There's one for each quarter and that will show the total wages paid in the quarter. And then in the state of Arizona, we have the Department of Economic Security. It's called the UC018 and that shows all the unemployment taxes that you paid for Arizona. You want to include that if you have a high volume of payroll because you're paying a portion of that unemployment that increases your eligibility for your PPP loan. And then you're also going to need to provide a payroll summary report that lists each employee and the total date made in that year, whether it was 2019 or 2020, because your lender is going to have to ensure that nobody's received over $100,000 in wages. Amber, yeah.
I had a question from somebody previously that does business in multiple states and they asked if lenders will require the equivalent of the UC018 from all the states in which they have employees.
So we are, we're not requiring the, the state wages, the quarterly unemployment report at all. But if you want to use that as part of your eligibility, you do have to provide that. So if they wanted to use the amounts they paid, they would need to provide the documentation that that's been paid. Alternately, they might be able to show a bank statement that shows it or there's a lot of cares documentation that's coming from payroll providers that listed on there. That's, that's something that you can use as well. So if you have somebody like ADP, Paychex, Gusto, I think So if you have somebody like A D P, Paychex, Gusto, um, I think QuickBooks payroll. There's some really nifty cares reports that you can pull that give you your payroll summary. And it automatically includes the nine forty, the nine forty ones, and it just, it's one all in one document. It's really nice and easy. Um, so maybe ask your payroll service provider if they have something like that and that will make your application process much easier. If you are a ten sixty five partnership. Then there's going to be two ways you're eligible to get a PPP. The first is from your partnership K one. So you're going to want to look at your K one line fourteen for each partner. Line fourteen minus line twelve will give you your eligible amount. If you have self-employment income through your partnership. If that's a negative number, then you won't be able to get eligibility based on your K ones. And you're going to want to include it for each partner. That's a part of the the tax return. They all need to be included in one. It's not where each partner can apply for their own PPP. Um, and it's that amount times point nine two three five. Um. I would say, don't worry about considering that calculation. Your lender will help you out with that. Um. The the K ones are a little bit tricky. Um, if you don't have any net income from your K ones, um, self-employment income, or you don't want to include your K ones. You can just provide your your payroll documentation and it's the same documentation um to get eligibility. And then if you are a corporation, whether you're an eleven twenty or an eleven twenty S and S corp filer. Or if you're a nonprofit, the only way that you're eligible for a PPP is based on wages that you've paid. We have seen a lot of eleven twenty S uh corporations, S corps. That are, um, they're their only employee. A lot of professionals um might file an S corp for tax benefits. If you're not paying yourself W two wages through your S corp and you don't have any employees, you're not eligible for a PPP. It's not considered self-employment income because your corporation is a separate entity entity of you. And you you should talk to your CPA or accountant because you should be paying yourself W two wages. Just another reminder, you can only use twenty nineteen or twenty twenty documentation. You can't co-mingle. I know I keep repeating that, but people keep uh having that mistake in their applications. So it's just important to remember that. Um, the other types of documentation that you're going to need to be prepared to provide to your lender. Are going to be your articles of organization or incorporation if you have an LLC or a corporation or an organization. If you're a sole proprietor that um files a schedule C and you just use your social security number. So a lot of realtors, artists, stylists. A lot of other businesses just file as a sole proprietor. You don't use any kind of business name. You won't have articles of organization. Everybody else will be required to provide their articles of organization or incorporation. If you don't have a copy handy, you can go to the Arizona Corporation Commission website. And do the organization search and you can pull down your articles of organization. Anybody that is a twenty percent or more owner will have to provide personal information. And their identification. You're also going to have to provide a February twenty twenty bank statement. And the reason for that is you have to show that you were in operation on February fifteenth twenty twenty. If you are filing a schedule C, you're going to want to provide a ten ninety nine from the same year. That you've received. Um, if you didn't receive a ten ninety nine because you don't earn more than six hundred from anyone given customer. Um, you can provide a book of business. Um, your twenty twenty bank statement can also be sufficient to show that you were in operation as well. Again, the payroll documentations, we're looking for um the I R S nine forty. Your quarterly nine forty ones, Arizona employment, unemployment, U C zero one eight. Uh, payroll summary report. There's a nine forty four and a couple other for for different types of um employers. But these are kind of the main ones that you're going to want to use. And worst case scenario is you can also provide a copy of the W three and the W twos that you provided for twenty nineteen. Or if you provided them for twenty twenty, but if you have your W twos, you probably have your nine forty and your nine forty ones. And then you're also going to need to be prepared to provide a voided check that um. Is where you want your PPP to be funded into. Now, to bring it back, loan forgiveness, you're going to get this PPP loan. It is an actual loan that. You're going to sign a loan doc for, so you're going to have to sign a promissory note. And then once the covered period is up, um, or you've exceeded at least eight weeks, then you'll be able to apply for forgiveness. And your loan will be forgiven. So this is a loan and you will have to sign loan documentation, but it's a forgivable loan. Um, a lot of people, the first round were really concerned because it's the first time anybody's done this type of program before. Was the S B A really going to give forgiveness? Is there some kind of catch? I can tell you that we haven't put a single person through. That hasn't received full forgiveness, that's used their funds correctly and that's provided the correct documentation. The only issues that we run into is somebody that did a draft schedule C tax return. And then changed their numbers before they filed the return and the there was a discrepancy there. Um, so full forgiveness, you are eligible for full forgiveness as long as you use your PPP for sixty percent payroll. And forty percent for other eligible expenses. And it's over an eight to twenty four week covered period that you need to use those funds. If you do happen to have an amount that for whatever reasons not forgiven, say you only use fifty percent of payroll. And you have ten percent of your loan that's not eligible for forgiveness, you'll have a ten month deferral. From the end of your covered period, you'll be on a five-year repayment schedule with one percent interest. I have not seen the simplified process yet for loans that are under a hundred and fifty thousand. Um. But supposedly it's supposed to be a one-page easy application um to apply for forgiveness if your loan amount is one hundred and fifty thousand or under. Right now, the process is pretty simple. They're not doing a ton of verification. Um. But I'm looking forward to seeing an even easier forgiveness process. Once you've received the funds in your account and you've started using them, once you hit eight weeks. You can start applying for forgiveness if you if you'd like to. But you have ten months from the end of your covered period and your covered period is eight to twenty four weeks. And you get to choose which option you want or what what term you want. But you have ten months from the end of the cover period to get full forgiveness. Now, if you forget to file for forgiveness or something happens and you don't apply on time. You can still get forgiveness, but you'll have to start making repayments on your full PPP at the end of that ten-month mark. But you can still apply for forgiveness and get the rest of it forgiven.
And Amber, just to reemphasize something you said earlier, the covered period. Used to be eight or twenty four weeks and one of the changes was that it's anywhere from eight to twenty four weeks. So you know, if you're done at sixteen weeks and that that can be your covered period. Uh, also in the original rules, there was something called an alternative covered payroll period, if anyone remembers that. Uh, that is no longer in place for new PPP first draw or second draw loans.
Thanks. That's a good distinction. And when we're talking about eligible wages, it's anything that was earned. Or paid during the cover period. So if um you, if you get your. PPP in your bank account on Monday and your payroll withdrawals on Wednesday. That's been paid during the covered period. And then if it's the last week of your pay period, but you don't pay it until after the end of the twenty four weeks. Um, it was earned during that time, so it's earned or paid during your covered period. So there's the. Extra week of wiggle room on both ends. But most people will be able to use the full amount over that twenty four week period. Because it's only two and a half or three and a half times your. Um, amount for it, three and a half is only for those second draws that are the seven two mix codes. But you should be able to use your full PPP loan over the twenty four weeks. Just to clarify a couple of the terms that we talked about, I think we just kind of clarified them, but. Uh, seasonal employer by definition is going to be an employer that operates for no more than seven months in a year. Or that earns no more than a third of its receipts in any six-month period. The covered period again is an eight to, it's an eight to twenty four week period. Um, and your covered period starts the day that the funds hit your bank account. So when you get the actual funds in your bank. That's that's day zero. That's the day that your covered period starts. And then the seven two NIX code, so that's your standard industry code. It's the accommodations and food services sector. That provide customers with lodging and or preparing meals, snacks, beverages for immediate consumption. Um, so we're talking about hotels, inns, RV parks, campgrounds, um. Mobile food trucks, mobile food service providers. Caterers, bars, restaurants, snack bars, cafeterias, anybody that provides food for immediate consumption. Um, this would exclude like mini marts and grocery stores because that's not prepared food for immediate consumption. It's um. You know, perishable and non-perishables. You can look on your previous tax returns if you're a schedule C, um, a ten sixty five partnership. I know that they're on there. I don't think that they're on the eleven twenty. Um, but if you look, I mean, you should know if you're in accommodations or food, but. It's going to be based on what you've filed in the past, so you can find that on your on your tax form. So a couple of uh recaps of our takeaways before we head into Q and A session. You can apply through any eligible lender and at this point, um, the community bank requirement has. Has stopped, so all, anybody that's an eligible S B A seven A lender through this program can start taking applications as of today. And um you can check with. The original bank that you use to process your first round PPP if you're going for a second round. If you were dissatisfied with your first round provider and you want to move somewhere else, you can. You don't have to go with your original provider. The process might be easier because they have all your documentation. Um, but we've seen a lot of people that just don't want to use their first round provider. Um, we would be more than happy to process your application. You can also look at that lender list to find another lender that is accepting PPP as well.
Hey Amber, I don't believe, uh, I don't believe non-community, non-C F I's are accepting loan. Uh, lender application, loan applications until Friday or Monday. I don't think other banks are accepting quite yet.
Okay, I thought that it was only uh the eleventh and twelfth. And then it it opened up, but we can get, we can get some clarification on that. Um. There are, the S B A changed the portal that they were accepting applications through. And there's been a lot of technology issues with that portal. So there's. There's been some delays in processing applications through, from the lender to the S B A. Um, so this is one of those things that as everybody's working through the kinks, that patience and understanding is going to be extremely important. Everybody on, from the S B A to the lenders to. Resource community partners that are trying to provide information. Everybody's working really, really, really hard to try to. Iron out all these kinks, so. Patience and understanding and a little grace for everybody would be very much appreciated by all, I'm sure. Um, in terms of application requirements, just to recap, you're going to have to provide payroll documentation. If this is a second draw loan, you are required to have a twenty five percent reduction in your. Um, one quarter of twenty twenty as compared to twenty nineteen. Now, one caveat is that if your business. Is getting a PPP for under one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you don't have to provide that proof upfront. But you will have to provide that proof when you apply for forgiveness or if the S B A asks for it. So that's really something that's important. Um, the reason that the I R S did that is because a lot of the smaller businesses may not have regular financials and it may be. Burdensome and it may prevent them from moving forward on a second draw. Um. There's a a nice little reduction spreadsheet again that I created. It's pretty easy to use. We can put the link in and you can just use your bank statements. So if you don't regularly do a profit and loss. Um, if you don't regularly do any kind of bookkeeping. Then it's a really easy spreadsheet for you to just use your bank statements. You're going to want to provide your twenty nineteen business tax return and your twenty twenties as soon as you have it, if you have it. Uh, your business information, including your articles of organization. If you don't have those handy, you can go to the Arizona Corporation Commission website. And pull those down for free. Um, your twenty twenty profit and loss statement, if you have it, will help serve as proof for the twenty five percent reduction. Remember, if you're a first-time borrower, you're not required to show that twenty five percent reduction. That is only an eligibility requirement for the second time, second draw loans. Um, if you are a schedule C filer, you're going to want to provide a copy of your ten ninety nine. And then an owner will have to provide uh their owner document, documentation and information. Again, this is a fully forgivable loan. It is a loan, but it is forgivable if you use it for the correct purposes. Sixty percent payroll, forty percent for other eligible expenses. The amount you're eligible for is based on two and a half times your average W two payroll. For either twenty nineteen or twenty twenty, up to the first one hundred thousand dollars in wages and remember. Each of your employees does have to reside in the United States. If you are. A foreign employer or you don't have U S residency. And you pay W two wages, you can still use those W two wages to be eligible. You just can't use anything that you've paid to yourself. If you are not a resident of the United States. And then for second draws only if you are in the food or accommodations with a seven two um. Next code, you'll be eligible for three and a half times. If you are self-employed and you file a schedule C. You will be eligible for owner compensation replacement if on your schedule C line thirty one, you have positive net income. If you don't have positive net income, you're not eligible for a PPP. And then um Tom, I don't know if you want to talk for a second, just a little bit about the idle program, the emergency disaster loan program and what that looks like.
Sure, I know we want to get to Q and A, so I'll go pretty quickly. As you said, the economic injury disaster loans, if you did not. Receive one of those previously, they are extended through December thirty first of twenty twenty one. You may apply for a loan. Um, idle advances are also available. Those were refunded. As Amber already said, what the great news is, if you received an idle advance in the past and it uh. Was a reduction to your forgiveness on your PPP, that is no longer the case. Uh, if you have that situation and you've already applied and received forgiveness and. Perhaps you already paid back your non-forgiven amount of your PPP or. Um, some people got a PPP where the idle advance was taken off at the dispersal. Uh, there is a process being developed where the S B A will remit back to the bank that amount of money. And you can get that amount of money back to you. Um, and that will then qualify you as having fully used your PPP so that you can apply for a second draw. Uh, there are also idle grants that are for low-income communities. For companies that receive uh experienced a thirty percent. Um, gross receipts reduction. And what that allows those companies to do is in combination with any advance they will have received, so they must have applied for an idle loan. Previously and and maybe they got the advance, maybe they didn't, but they got the loan. If they got an advance, say of three thousand dollars, they can now get an idle grant of seven, taking their total to ten. If they got the idle loan, but the idle advance monies were already gone. And so they got zero advanced, they can get a ten thousand dollar grant. Um, so again, those are very specific. To meet, you know, rules about being a low-income community and the thirty percent gross receipts reduction. And those remain at thirty years, three point seven five percent for businesses, two point seven five percent for nonprofits.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, so next steps for you to prepare to apply for your PPP. Um. The second draw loans, li- like I said, the the S B A is experiencing some some issues with the. Um, backend software right now. Second draw loans are eligible to start applying today, um, but I would have the expectation that it's going to take a few days for things to. To work out the kinks. Um, for anybody that has their first round PPP through Prestamos. We are waiting for the software provider to initiate the the second. Round process flows and you'll automatically be receiving an email either today or tomorrow. Um, to apply and I would imagine that most lenders are in that same bucket because. The backend information didn't come out until Sunday, so the programmers are trying really quick to get everything. And there's also a brand new portal. It's not the same original portal that lenders communicated with the S B A the last time. Um, so there's some kinks that have been being worked out right now. Um, but pull. Pull all your payroll documentations, get your articles of organizations. If you're a second round. But pull, pull all your payroll documentations, get your articles of organizations. If you're a second round PPP. Borrower, you're going to want to make sure that you're, you've determined that you have that 25% decrease. And that you can justify that and you will have to provide that documentation if you have a PPP loan of 150,000 or more. I'm going to give you the handout for the 25% reduction spreadsheet in the comments after I finish with the presentation. You can start applying in the next couple of days. I'm not 100% sure with all the lenders, so check with your lender. We are accepting applications now through prestamosloans.org, PPP, all the details about how to apply are on the website. If you have already gotten a PPP loan through us in the past, you don't need to apply again. It'll automatically happen when we're going to be able to take applications. I would also check with your lender. Don't try to reapply with them because it'll probably mess up the, the system on the backend. This is the spreadsheet that I'm talking about. All you have to do is put in your total wages. Or I'm sorry, your total gross receipts or gross revenue for each month of the year. And it'll tell you automatically if you hit that, you only have to have one quarter that's seen a reduction in 25%. If you started your business in the first quarter of 2020. You can compare. The first quarter of 2020 against the second, third or fourth, and you only have to hit one quarter. It's not the whole year. It's just one quarter has to have seen a reduction of 25% or more. And that's it. We can go to Q and A. I see we have some questions. And both Tom and I are happy if you guys need to have some more specific questions answered that we can't get to today. Feel free to reach out to us via, via email and we're happy to, we're happy to answer your questions as, as time permits.
First question, can owners of LLC or not W2 apply in round two? And be included in employee count. Amber, I would think that depends. An LLC is not a filing type, so it depends what your filing status is. And if you are Schedule C, then as Amber said, you use line 31 as owner compensation replacement.
Yeah, I would say if you're an owner of an LLC and you're not paying yourself your W2, which you shouldn't be anyway. As for tax, that's not, you should be filing as an escort if you're going to do that, but that's beside the point. If you're in the owner of an LLC, you're going to use your net income line 31 to determine your eligibility. You're not considered. You're also not considered an employee of your company. You're the owner of the company, so that won't be included in the FTE number. I think that I was actually the question. Is the 25% reduction based on cash or accrued basis? The nice thing is the SBA has left the determination of cat. Of gross wages or gross income as very flexible. So it's really going to be individual based. If you file your taxes cash or accrued, I would say be consistent with that. Consistency is key when you're doing anything through PPP. What do you normally do? What's your standard operating? And it says right on your tax return, how you file, whether that's cash or accrued, accrual basis. So I would, I would use that when you're determining your 25% reduction. Not sure what this question from Beth was. Our 501(c)(6) pays a management fee to a company who manages the association. There's no employees. Can they apply for the PP1 using the management fee? No, you can only use W2 wages. However, the management company, if they pay employees, they can. You have to have W2 wages if you're a nonprofit organization to be eligible. An anonymous attendee is asking. They have no revenue for 2020. They cannot demonstrate a 25% reduction. That means you cannot apply for a second round. There's a lot of circumstances that are going to leave certain businesses out for 2020. But you are, you have to be able to justify that you had a 25% decrease in your gross receipts, gross revenues. In order to be eligible for the second draw. The first draw, you don't have to have that reduction. It's just for the second draw.
Right, but you will have to have some sort of payroll basis. There's a question about is Prestamos, Prestamos accepting applications?
Yes, we are. You can apply right now online. I will put it in the chat. I'm more than happy to take you.
Then there's a question about PPP. So what's the schedule we were provided was. PPP first draw opened on the 11th with community financial institutions, second draw open on the 13th. And other land, which is today, and other lenders, we expect to open Monday, could be Friday. But yes, those applications are open that way.
If an EIN was changed because of a partnership buyout during 2020 with the new EIN qualify for a loan. If it's the same, this is a complicated question, but if it's the same business entity and you just changed your, your structure. You might be able to do all of it combined into one, but that's really a lender specific question and how they're doing their underwriting. So you would want to speak with your, whatever lender you're choosing about that situation. You might have to do two separate. Or they might let you combine it.
Yeah, and if you can't get an answer from your lender, I would suggest reaching out. Robert suggested a number of resources like the SBDC. Perhaps reaching out to your SBDC and asking them to see if they can get an answer from the SBA on that for you. Someone asked about they applied with a larger bank and took a long time the first time. And they're wondering if they should go back to that larger bank or go somewhere else. You know, that is definitely a preference question, but what I would recommend is. Why don't you contact that bank and ask them what their process will be and make your decision from there.
Great advice. Can my second PPP still be based on the 2019 payroll? The answer is yes, you can use either 2019 or 2020. You can't use a combination of both, but you can still use your 29, 2019. And for the majority of businesses, you're probably going to want to use your 2019 data because you probably had higher payroll expenses in 2019. Obviously, there is going to be some exceptions to that. Certain businesses did have an increase in, in wages in 2020. But most people will want to use their 2019 data.
And somebody asked if there's a maximum loan amount and that's a, not knowing which loan you're speaking of, there are three. First draw loans are a maximum of 10 million, second draw loans are maximum of two. Idols are still at the 150. And if you are an organization with affiliates, in other words, multiple loans, because you have multiple businesses under one organization. Under first draw, I believe those cap out at 20 million. So kind of depends on exactly what's being asked here. But you know, something we didn't mention earlier, if anyone is in NIX code 71, entertainment and recreation. There is a shuttered venue grant program. We don't have information on that yet. But if you apply for shuttered venue grants, you cannot apply for PPP.
That's right. There was another question, does the previous PPP and idle loan count as income? Neither the idle advance nor either PPP needs to be counted as income or gross receipts for tax purposes. Or for the purposes of determining a 25% reduction in gross revenues.
Then somebody asked me a question. They got a $1,000 advance previously. They're curious about the idle grants to bridge them to the 10,000. That just depends. The rules include low income community and a 30% gross receipts reduction. And you also have had to have received the loan, not just the advance, I believe. So it's kind of a depends answer that there is an opportunity, but it depends if you meet the rest of those requirements.
I'm pulling the, this is the. Reduction spreadsheet, so anybody that wants to pull it down, it's just a, an Excel document and just fill out the colored fields. It's, it's pretty easy to use. There's a lot of questions about the idle. I think the safe bet is to refer people to the SBA idle website. Or maybe you could email Tom directly because these are a lot of very specific questions. But the, the SBA guidance on idle loans, how to request an additional and about the advances should all be on their website as well. If I'm using 2019 info, do I need to use the statement for 2019 as well? The, the bank statement that you're going to want to provide is going to be the February 2020 bank statement. And that just shows that you were in operation on February 15th, 2020. So you can submit all your 2019 info and I'd recommend having your bank statement from February 2020 as well. If you want a comparison between the 2019 and 2020 income and expenses, not everything's included. For QuickBooks in the last quarter of 2020, do you estimate the amount? I would recommend that you, if you don't have another quarter that qualifies as the 25% reduction. That you finish up your bookkeeping first. Remember that you only have to have a deduction in one quarter. It doesn't have to be all of them. So if you had a deduction or a reduction of 25% in quarter one, two or three, you don't have to show it in quarter four. So it would, you don't have to finish your books just yet. You use paychecks. Are they pretty good at separating the 1099 employee payments and the reports? Paychecks should not be reporting 1099 employee payments because 1099s are subcontractors. They're not considered employees. So it shouldn't be a part of any of your wage reports, shouldn't be a part of your 940 or 941s. You don't pay unemployment tax. So those should be totally separate. In terms of the NIX code, one of them is 72. Should I include all of them or just a 72 one? I would use the one that you use on your taxes for tax purposes because that's your main, main NIX code. And then. Does mortgage count as an expense? Not the mortgage, only the interest portion of the mortgage. And it can only be the current interest. You can't prepay any interest. And that doesn't count towards the amount you're eligible for. It's just an authorized expense of up to 40% you can use with the proceeds. If applying for a second PPP loan, do you advise to delay applying for forgiveness on the first loan and apply for both at the same time? I honestly don't think it matters. It's going to be up to your lender. I know that we've paused doing any forgiveness. Because we've moved all of our resources to processing new applications. You have time to apply for forgiveness for both programs. I personally think it's up to you and up to your preference. Some people just want to get it over with. Other people are happy to, to wait. It would make it easier probably for you if you did it all at once, but I think that's just a personal preference or what your lender is going to require. Should the owner be included in an employee headcount? If you are paying yourself W2 wages, you're an employee. If you are not paying yourself W2 wages, I would not include yourself in the headcount because you're self-employed. If we're requesting a second round of a PPP loan and received it from a larger bank, how will we know they are going to offer this program again? First thing I would do is check out their website. Second is call them, stop in the branch. If you can't get ahold of someone, we are more than happy to take you at Prestamos. Your loan will probably be processed within one to two weeks depending upon the volume. But we're, we have a lot of resources available, so we can process them really quickly. So we're happy to take you, but you'll have to ask your individual bank whether or not they're, they're still accepting applications.
The SBA in the past, and I assume they will again, is published on participating lenders. They usually, Robert usually gets those and also publishes them at ACA. And I know the SBDC has that list as well. And we posted that list. There's a link to it at the, the beginning of the chat. Scroll to the top of the chat box, you can find a link to that lender list. So someone asked if PPP too will run out, maybe. What I will point out is that there is a March 31st deadline. And it's, it is not an application deadline. The deadline as it was before is the lender must be provided an SBA loan number by that date. What that means exactly in terms of timing, my advice is don't wait till, you know, the 29th to apply of March, you know. So it's March 31st, know that you should be applying as soon as you're ready.
Yeah, for our application process, we take a pre-application. And then the lead will get converted into an application and you will be invited to start uploading your documentation. The quicker you get your documentation in, the better because you can't have your loan approved until you've provided all the documentation. So being responsive and making sure you're getting all of your information to your lender as quickly as possible. Speeds that process up. Then there's two documents that you have to sign. You have to sign the actual application. Which is going to be the 2483 or the 2483 SD for second draws. Those are probably going to have to come for your, from your lender and it's probably going to be electronic. So I wouldn't recommend, I mean, you can fill one out just to get an idea of what you're eligible for, but don't expect your lender to take the application you filled out. And then from there, you're going to also have to sign that note because remember this is a loan, so you will have to sign a low, a note. After all that signed, then, actually you won't sign the note until after. So you have to fill out the application and then it gets submitted to the SBA. The first go around, the SBA was giving automatic approvals. This time the new system has a delay. And the purpose for the delay is for them to be able to monitor and make sure that certain types of businesses under, in underserved communities. And with tenant under employees are able to get access with priority over larger businesses. So it's not going to happen as quickly as it did the first round. I would make sure that you apply at least a full five days before the end. And be very responsive with getting your information in as quickly as possible.
We're, we're over time, but I didn't stop as sooner because there were some good questions. I wanted to make sure those, those questions got answered. But we are coming up to a point where we do need to wrap up. I want to say thank you, Amber, and thank you, Tom, for your knowledge and insight and sharing this information with our attendees. Again, if you have questions, Amber posted her information, so did Tom. You can contact myself and I can get you in contact with them as well. Or other organizations that can help you work through the application process or looking at your financials to help provide the information you need to. To apply for a loan. So with that, we want to wrap up this session. We want to remind, also remind everybody about tomorrow's session at 9:00 AM. Be linked in to grow and scale your business. Looking forward to that. Thank you for attending and until then have a great day and we'll see you tomorrow. Thank you.
Bye bye.